Proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark, members of City Council. I am Francis Bielli, the Board's Executive Director. Joining me today are Deputy Pension Director Shamika Talfaro. To my right, to Shamika's right, Christopher DeFusco, Chief Investment Officer, and other members of our executive staff, and the Chair of the Pension Board, Mr. Rob DeBeau. Before I read my summary of the submitted testimony, I'd like to thank those of you to whom I've met during the past year for your input and ideas on strengthening the pension plan. While our budget request is slightly higher than FY '17 estimated obligation levels, it remains lower than the amount requested in six of the past 11 years. This funding will maintain staffing at its optimal level and covers fringe benefits as well as a scheduled 3% raise for the Board's District Council 33 represented staff. The demographics of our staff is 75% female, 61% African-American, 3% Asian-American, and 2% Hispanic. Our current executive staff is 50% female and 50% African-American. The plan's funding percentage remained relatively flat, decreasing from 45 to 44.8% as of July 1st, 2016. In February 2017, the Board voted to again reduce the assumed rate of return to its current 7.70%, a total reduction of 1.05% over the past nine years. Part of the Board's actuary, while the funding ratio may appear to reflect lack of progress in funding, the decrease in the assumed rate of return represents improvement of the fund's risk profile, improving the likelihood of achieving the assumption in the future. The fund's investment return for the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, through March is 9.26% net of fees versus our policy index, which is 8.77%. The fund's portfolio was restructured following the Board's decision in fiscal year 2016 to divest from hedge funds and many of our illiquid distressed debt vehicles. The redemption of these high-fee actively managed investments is almost complete, resulting in a dramatic reduction in investment fees paid by the Board. From $33.5 million, which is a 0.69% ratio in FY '14, to $16.3 million, which is a 0.38% investment ratio in FY '16, which is an overall reduction of 51% during that timeframe. Passively managed investments, otherwise known as indexing, now accounts for approximately 51% of the fund's assets, up from approximately 29% just three years ago in December of 2014. Using our investment manager database, the Board once again conducted a utilization study to determine the universe of diverse investment managers that meets the fund's criteria, which is having a three-year track record and at least $100 million in assets under management. The results are that 8.6% of the firms and 4.6% of the products had greater than 50% minority or women ownership. The fund's current lineup of investment managers includes 36.7% diversity managers, far surpassing the universe that the utilization study revealed, and outpacing the fund's FY '16 showing of 28%. The Board continues to seek out high-quality, diverse, local, and emerging managers for allocations across all asset classes. Board members and staff continue to participate in the Mid-Atlantic Plan sponsors, the National Association of Securities Professionals, and other nonprofit organizations that are proponents of diversity investment professionals. In February 2017, Trustee Carol Stooks-Baylor was honored by being elected into the NASP Hall of Fame as a result of her advocacy on behalf of diversity investment managers. The Board is a member of a national association called the 30% Coalition, which is an organization committed to the goal of increasing women participation on corporate boards. The Board also continues to support proxy initiatives promoting issues such as inclusive corporate boards, equal pay, and other important social issues. In addition to selecting Marquette as its general consultant and Torrey Cove as its private equity consultant, the Board has chosen Nationwide to serve as the third-party administrator of the city's deferred compensation plan, at fees significantly lower than those of the incumbent. The transition to Nationwide is underway and will be complete by the end of May 2017, including a full-time certified financial planner who will be available on location daily to all plan members. The 457 Plan allows employees to contribute a portion of their earnings into a pre-tax defined contribution program and to self-manage the investment of these contributions within the available options. Participation in the 457 Plan is encouraged as a way for employees to create retirement income in addition to their accrued defined benefit pension. There are currently 20,329 employees participating in the 457 Plan, representing 73% of those eligible to participate. As of February 2017, this plan has exceeded $1 billion in total assets. The Board continues to provide retirement education sessions to system members, annually reaching thousands of employees through in-house training as well as visits to various operating departments and participating in seminars for members of the police and firefighters' unions. The Board also participates in the Personnel Department's two-day onboarding seminar for new employees. As of the close of fiscal year '16, membership in the pension fund has surpassed 66,000 members, and the number of benefit recipients, which is greater than 35,000, and the annual rate of pension payments, which is approximately $748.8 million excluding drop payments, both reached all-time highs. We respectfully request that you approve our budget, and we'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask a couple of questions. On page eight of your testimony, you list a few highlights achieved by the Pension Board in FY '17, including achieving in your testimony 8.5. I understand that's now 9%.
Market keeps going up.
Awesome. All right. Certain person watched it, and I'm sure is going to take credit for this, too. Stock market issues, but anyway. Return net fees to date and reducing the assumed rate of return to 7.7. Does the Board have a goal of how much lower the assumed rate of return should be? Or we keep driving it down?
I think the Board's stated goal is to continue to gradually reduce the assumed rate of return going forward. There are a number of public pension funds out there. We actually had our consultant take a look at public pension plans valued between $2 and $9 billion, and the average assumed rate of those plans was 7.60%. So we're not far off the average with our current 7.70, but again, the stated goal of the Board is to continue to try to gradually reduce.
Okay. Kind of goofy question. So, a few years back, there was a big developer down here, and I don't know if I talked to you, was trying to get the city's pension fund to invest in a real estate deal in Center City. Right now, given what's happening in the real estate market, I could think was, may have been a good approach to that investment. And there was some back and forth. Ultimately, the pension fund opted not to go that direction. So my question is, is there, and I'm assuming it is, a set of parameters around what type of investments the city's pension fund can get engaged in? As an example, like, there have been some people who made some suggestions because they personally invested in the cannabis fund, and I gotta believe that's gonna blow up real soon. I'm just being real. It's, you know, people are gonna start smoking weed and somewhere down the line. It'll be recreational, I believe, in the state of Pennsylvania. But is there like a limit on what we can get engaged in? I mean, it's like, I understand we have to have low-risk investments, but to what degree is that?
So, so we do have an investment policy statement, which does provide parameters as to the amount of assets and the years of experience that an investment manager must have in order for us to be involved with that manager. Concerning real estate, we take a similar approach in that many new funds or new companies that are initially starting out their investments, we try to see at least a track record first before we get involved in them, and that would have been applicable to the situation that you're referring to from a couple of years ago.
They had a couple of big buildings down here.
They do, and we subsequently interviewed that same company and that individual who, it was the Ritz-Carlton, actually, if you recall.
I wasn't gonna say the name, but, okay.
But, but we interviewed them on another project, and we went through due diligence, we went through our consultants, and it just, it wasn't a good fit for other reasons, but not because of their investment acumen. But there are other aspects of investments that we look at. So concerning venture capital-type of investments, we do invest in private equity, in the area of private equity, and some of the private equity managers could invest in up-and-coming companies, such as the company you referred to.
Cannabis.
We would not invest directly. We would not invest directly. We don't do angel investing or things like that. That has not worked out so well in the past, to do small angel investing, but we don't prohibit, or I don't believe there's a prohibition against our investment managers getting involved in businesses such as that.
Okay. Is there any potential conflict if the government, i.e. the municipality, takes an action that would enhance the company that we would, that we potentially may invest in? So, I'm sorry to keep bringing up cannabis, you know, because I'm telling you, that's things won't be like. To some degree, we have some governing authority or placement of operations of those type of entities. Is there conflict if we invest? Because I see these people, there's some discussion about certain elected officials that took votes and they bought stock in particular companies that are now rising, and they have a direct ability as a legislator to impact some of the operations of that particular company.
So, because the Board itself makes all the investment decisions, the individual members of whatever legislature it is, whether it's City Council or State Legislature or some other legislature, they do not have a direct vote on the investments. So there's no specific conflict. However, there are rules in state law that prohibit us from investing or even having them, have those people solicit investments from us, who are political donors to local political candidates.
Okay.
That's under Act 44 of the state law.
Okay.
The federal government has different rules concerning the legislature's ability to be involved in investments, but, but no, I would say no particular conflict. However, we do have, we do have a full-time compliance officer, a lawyer who's a compliance officer on staff at the Board of Pensions, and we would look at any situation on a case-by-case basis, and we do vet, we vet, and our consultants vet every possible investment very closely before being presented to the Board.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Chair, can I ask Councilman Don?
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
I have a couple of questions, just one that will make sure understood. One is that your request for $402,000 is about 6% on your budget, roughly.
Okay.
And the wage increases are 3%. Where are the other 3%? Where's that going?
Fringe benefits for those wages.
Are your fringe benefits in Class 100?
Class 100, correct.
So your department includes fringe benefits in Class 100?
Correct. I'm gonna have to check for clarification with Dave Fagan. Yes. The answer is yes.
So if I'm looking at your budget and says fiscal year '18, proposed appropriations,
Yeah, as Mr. DeBeau just pointed out, we're different than the general fund because our fringe benefits do show with the Class 100 as opposed to other operating departments.
So you show it right?
Yes.
That's good.
It's a true indication of the cost.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, by the way. That's good. So that means that your budget is pretty much fully loaded except for maybe overhead of the city, but all your fringe benefits are in there.
Yeah, we rarely go over budget, usually go under in Class 100.
And I guess the reason why it's 3% for wage and another 3% is because, as we've said before, for every dollar of wage, it's close to 87 to 90 cents of benefits.
That's right. I think we've discussed that previously.
Do you have an idea of the return on the pension, the last five years and last 10 years, ballpark return?
Yes. Our CIO has those numbers.
Make sure you identify yourself. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Sorry, good afternoon.
I'm gonna state your name for the record.
Yep. Chris DeFusco from the Pension Fund. The one-year return, I'm quoting from February, so this, our numbers are through February of 2017, the one-year return was 15.76%.
What were the dates of that return? 15.6?
15.76. That's from February of '16 to February of '17.
That's phenomenal, by the way.
The three-year return is 3.52%.
That's not too good.
The five-year return is 6.34%, and the inception-to-date return, which goes back to the late '80s, is 7.44%.
Do you have a 10-year return?
I'm sorry, I skipped over that. I apologize. 4.63%.
4.6 in the last 10 years?
Correct.
So do you think, based on these numbers, that it's prudent for us to keep the assumed rate of 7.7?
Just one caveat to those return numbers before we specifically answer that question is that a drag on those returns have been the portfolio prior to a year ago and over that two- to three-year period, where that large reliance on hedge funds and distressed debt really acted as an anchor on our returns. And you could see as that's been removed over the last year, the returns have really started to do well, and it's not just because the stock market has been doing well and the fees were cutting half. So I think if you look at the inception-to-date, which is 1988, and the return is approximately 7.4% including those anchor years, I think we are getting closer to being in the ballpark for that assumed rate of return. In addition, our consultant, who looks at our assumed rate of return, looking out 10 years, assumes that we will return greater than 7.70 over a 10-year period.
So do you think in the administration's plan to fund the pensions, which is over the next 13 years, that the assumed rate we're using for 13 years is achievable?
I think it's achievable. I think it would be, clearly it would be more achievable if the assumed rate was less. However, even if we don't get to 7.70% and don't reach 80% funding, if we achieve 7.6%, we're going to achieve 75% funding or somewhere in that neighborhood, which is a big plus over where we're at right now. So in that respect, the plan is a positive.
What might be helpful for this body is to give us the analysis for that 13-year plan, showing what you're assuming now, but showing the impact if it's 7, 6, and 5.
Okay.
And I don't think it's gonna be a big impact, but at least that we see what it is.
Okay.
The other, the last question for this round is that I've been told, I think by, I know Rob has told me this, 90% of our pension problem occurred, I think, from 1967 to 1987?
That's right. The 1967 plan, as it's generically known, that's right.
So do we know the average age of the people that are in that pension plan today?
That is in the actuary report, and I can get you that information, but yes, we know the average age, we know the number of people.
So I'd like to know the average age, because that's gonna tell us a lot, because once that disappears to a degree, it's gonna put less of a strain on this whole pension issue.
Yeah, the demographic page in the actuary report actually has a breakdown of all of the ages of each of the people that are still active and retired in those 67 plans.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Councilwoman Maria Cano Sanchez?
Yeah, I just wanna kind of echo what the Councilman Don was saying. You know, I know that if we reduce our expected rate of return, we have to pay more money into it, but 7.7 is still pretty aggressive, considering we have no history of it. So I know that's what you guys are gonna stick to, but you're setting yourself for aggressive numbers, so next year when you don't meet them, Councilman Don and others are going to pressure you for that. I had a little question around the, your status of your employees. You're budgeted for 73, but you only have 57. Why?
So we have, I think, yeah, as of now, it's 60. Quite frankly, I think we've, I've been there now a number of years, and I think the number of employees were, probably wasn't optimal. When I got there, it was actually lower than 73. I think we're probably somewhere close to the optimal number, so.
Okay. And then let me, you know, we had this conversation yesterday, please keep an eye on your salary gaps between minority, white, and female. You have a huge gap in that, and as you look to hire up, because you have vacancies, bear that in mind, because it's really drastic. Wanted to talk about your minority participation numbers, because you've remained, your MWD numbers continue to stay at 15%, even though you're reporting in year 15 and 16 that you got 18% and 28%. Why are your goals still lower?
So our goals are discussed each year with the folks at OEO, and because of that utilization study, the universe of managers is only 8.6%. We're at 37%, far surpassing that. And I think that's the reason that the goal was adjusted to 15%.
But if you're getting 36%.
We are.
And I want to ask you that, because then in your Page 11, in your contracting experience, is in your portfolio, none of these have any minority participation numbers. So I wanted to know, where do you get your 37% if on your contracting experience, all of these say zero?
So the 37% is of the people who manage money for the pension fund, which is where the fees come from, so of a percent of the fees that the pension fund pays out, which was 16 point some million dollars, 28.11% of that go to diverse managers.
So why is that, the total of contracts on Page 4, different than the ones on Page 11?
Because we have contracts that are not for investment managers, such as the actuary, such as the, we have a contract for an OIT technology provider and other contracts that are not investment-related.
In the contracting experience one, these say investment managers. Blue Harbor, Apollo Franklin, Causeway Avenue, Coppers, and all of them have no participation.
Right, they are investment managers. They're specifically investment, some of which have been terminated by the Board and so will not show up going forward.
Okay. So you told me that the professional services are your money managers, but these say investment managers also. So who are your minority managers?
I'll let Chris answer that. He has a list of, and we provide that each month in our flash report.
Yeah, you can provide it to the chair, it's just the numbers don't jive for me. So I just want to make sure that I'm looking apples to apples.
Yeah, we'll provide that.
As it relates to that. So, in light of the fact that you're claiming 30, almost 36.7%, why isn't your goal changing?
We'd be happy to change our goal. You know, we're achieving 36%, so.
No, I want to congratulate you for that, but why keep your goal at 15% if?
I think because of the universe of managers that are out there, that was seen to be double of what the universe is out there. But we've been very, very aggressive over the last, well, since I've been there, we've been very aggressive trying to increase that.
So we've affiliated, I mean, I know there's emerging, what they call emerging financial managers, there's the national group, New America, all those other folks. This has always been a sticking point with us, because we've heard over and over that those folks weren't out there. You know, I attended a pension fund training, and the room was full of brown people who do this stuff, so I'm glad to see that we have found them.
Yeah, it's a, you're right, and people will tell you, we went three years ago, in fact, Chris went, it was an emerging manager conference in Chicago.
New America sponsors them, they do Chicago, LA.
And we went there, we aggressively went out there to network and to find good, diverse managers, and the industry in general would like you to believe that that does not exist, but it's not true. It's just not true.
Well, thank you. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I'll say thank you and congratulations as well, because that's not, your response is the exception and not the norm. And there's a real continued interest from members of council, and I might argue on the second floor that we grow a government at the executive level that looks like the city of Philadelphia. There are folks in those departments with the qualifications and the capacity and the will and the work ethic, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So to the extent that we can have the executive offices reflect our city, it's great.
Yes. And we, I know Councilwoman Sanchez mentioned it, but one thing I should mention is that, and I don't know how many people would say this, but myself and the CIO, our salaries tend to skew the average, quite honestly. Our executive staff is quite diverse and quite even, in fact, you can look at the room. We are, and if you would throw out our salaries and look at everyone else, everyone is largely equal in that area.
Well, continue to stretch across, casting the net wide for opportunity. I am curious to know, President Clark said with tongue-in-cheek, the members of your brigade, so I would like for you to introduce them all and the role they play in your department, starting with the lady to your right.
So this is the Deputy Director of the Pension Fund, Shamika Talfaro.
Okay. You want to tell us what you do?
Hello. I'm pretty much responsible for managing the operations of the benefits. We handle the payments and the processing of the applications for service, disability, and death benefits on a benefit level.
How long have you been in the department?
I've been in the department for 16 years. I've been in this position for about three years.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Please, sir?
Thank you. Christopher DeFusco, Chief Investment Officer for the fund, you know, responsible for the oversight of the plan, making recommendations to the trustees about, you know, investment strategies, managers, et cetera. I've been with the city a little over 14 years and with the pension staff about four years.
About four years.
Four years.
Okay, if you could just introduce the members on that back row back there.
Sure. Oh, that's Teresa Gray. She's an administrator for the Board of Pensions. She's also currently spearheading the One Philly Project for the Board of Pensions. And like Shamika, Teresa has been with the Board of Pensions for many years. Next to Teresa is Stacy White, and Stacy is also an administrator handling, she supervises the counselors and handles all of the work of the counselors and the benefits, the applications and processing the benefit payments. Stacy's also been at the Board of Pensions many, many years. Anna's not with us. Dave Fagan, Dave Fagan, he's an executive officer at the Board of Pensions and also acts in the human resources role and the contract administration role. We have James Kasanis, and James is a lawyer. He was with the Law Department for many years in a private practice, and Jim is our Chief Compliance Officer, and he's been with us for a little over a month now.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And Erin Bailey is a Senior Investment Officer, and she came to us from Vanguard, and she's been with us about two months now.
Awesome.
And that's Kristen, and Kristen is an Investment Officer also, and she's been with us a little over two years now, and again, does a very good job.
Very good.
That's Dominique Cherry, and Dominique is the most senior Investment Officer out of all the Investment Officers, and she's been with the Board of Pensions a number of years. She also previously worked at Vanguard, and her father is a retired Philadelphia police officer.
Wow.
And that's Tyrone Jordan. We like to call him the Rev, because he's actually a reverend, so he keeps us honest, right? He keeps us honest. But he's a good man. He was a Finance Director previously in the City of Wilmington, worked in the Treasurers' Office and in the Borough of Yaden. He's a, he graduated from West Philadelphia High School, and he's been with us probably about eight months, Chris? Yeah, eight months. That's Bernard Buckley. Byrne spent the majority of his career at Janey, Montgomery, Scott. He's a local guy, he's a graduate of St. Joe's Prep, and he's like myself, and he's a, he's a Deputy Director in the Investment Unit, so.
I see.
That's, and again, he's been with us a little over a year, so you can, you can see, our most recent hires is a well-diverse group, and people like Shamika, who started out as a clerk at the Board of Pensions years and years ago, and, you know, I hired Shamika as the deputy, and she's, she's, she's just.
Met the test.
A good example of the Board of Pensions is, the staff is kind of like a family. Many people, we still have people who retire, come back, you know, every once in a while to visit people, bring their kids in, and people tend to grow at the Board of Pensions, and Stacy, Teresa, Shamika are all good examples of that.
Well, you're.
And I, we have another person here who came a little later.
I don't see where he stands.
That's Shahid Lloyd. He didn't go to Prep, but he did go to Central, so he's a smart guy. But Shahid is a supervisor in our Active Services Unit. That's the unit where folks purchase time, purchase prior city time, military time, and Shahid is just very smart and just very good, so.
Well, your team reflects what Councilwoman Sanchez acknowledged, is that when you have the opportunity to hire up, that you grow a diverse team, and I commend you for that. It should not go unrecognized.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
We try.
We appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, Councilman Don?
Can you hear me? Okay? Okay. If I'm reading your budget summary correctly, tell me if I'm right or wrong on this. There's a number of people, full-time staff says 57, and then civil service is an extra 12 is on top of that?
With, I'm sorry.
On your budget testimony, it says the number of full-time staff is 57.
Yeah, I think that's now up to 60, since that was submitted with a certain deadline.
An executive's eight?
That's about right.
So when you do the math dividing the budget out, and I just bring, I tell this to every department, so don't feel bad, everyone has the same problem, but it's averaging like $120,000 per employee based on your budget, and when you include the overhead of the city, it goes to like $150,000.
Okay.
So just want to be aware of that, when you hire somebody for 50, it's really 112, it's not 50.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, because we're in the benefit business, we get it.
Yeah, that's true. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, you and reserve funds, pensions and fund balance are our two biggest keys to bond ratings, so you have a very big role here to help us fix this bond rating with the city. And so in that light, I know Matt Stitt did a chart back in September, I think, showing us credit ratings for different cities across the country. Is there a chart that's similar that shows us cities similar to Philadelphia in the past 12 months, past three years, past five years, past 10 years, what their returns have been on their pensions?
So, yeah, there's various charts out there, and we looked at it, for example, in the fiscal year of the actuary report, which ended June 30th, 2016, where we had a down year. We were down 3.2%. And that was before we started making changes to the fund. Prior to that, the fund was run by our previous CIO, by, kind of like an endowment, it was similar to an endowment. And if you look at the endowment returns during that period of time, you know, Harvard Endowment.
Let me stop you for a second. What I'm referring to is how did Philadelphia do compared to Chicago? How did Philadelphia do compared to Atlanta or Cleveland?
So we did, during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016, we have a, we have a, we had our consultant look at public pension plans to find benefit plans greater than $1 billion in assets. 31 of the 55 had negative returns. Now, we can give you a specific term, but 31 of 55 had negative returns during that fiscal year. The endowments had even worse returns during that fiscal year.
So you see, that information would be very helpful to myself.
I can get you that. And then to update that, through December of 2016, which is in the midst of a lot of the changes that we made, we were at plus 4.9%. The five New York City pension funds are divided into five different funds. The range of their returns were 4.24 to 5.67. So in the midst of starting to make some of the changes, we were in the ballpark with all of those funds, and now I think we're probably higher than, or at least in the mainstream with other public pension funds, but we'll get you that data.
You should get that out there, because that will help your case, is what I'm saying.
Yes, okay.
And the other question I had for you is, have we looked at best practices of other cities and how they're managing pension departments like yours, to see if there's any ideas that we could maybe utilize in Philadelphia that have been used by other cities?
So from a benefit perspective, yes, we have do that, we have done that, and a large part of that will be the completion of the One Philly project, which will, which will give the members more of a self-serve option to the benefit aspect. From an investment perspective, we always are looking at other public pension funds, and that's one of the things that our consultants bring to us, because they not only advise other public pension funds, but they're at conferences all the time, and our trustees oftentimes go to conferences and bring back information that provide best practices.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Observations for members of the committee? We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Until next time.
We'll see you.